God bless you, my brothers and my sisters, in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And we praise God for another day, another week, that He have blessed us, that He have kept us, that He smile on us, just keep being good to us, and we are indebted to Him. To all of our New Hope Christians, and to all of our family and friends that shares with us each time this week, during this week, we praise God for you. Send them, want you to take a moment, and just call, or text, inbox, a family member, church member, friend, and let them know that this ministry, weekly ministry here at the New Hope Church, will do them good, not only today, but in the days to come. Send them, we pray that you have had a blessed week, bless Father's Day, and send them, pray that you, those that have a living Father, and send them, you share it with them, and send them, those Fathers that's gone on, that have get that rest, and send them, we know they not forgotten. God bless you, let us pray, guests of God, our Father, we come this day thanking you for this, another opportunity, another privilege, to be able to talk to you. And God, as we come now, we come as empty pitches before a full fountain of action, and Thou would look on us again with our pity, our compassion, our mercy. Lord, we praying, as we yield our will to yours, that you would, God, remind us of who we are, but above all, whose we are. Thank you, oh Father, that you saved us right in the nick of time. And God, we praying now, that Thou would forgive us of all of our trespasses, all of our unrighteousness, all of our faults, God. Continue to own us as your children. God, we praying for mankind everywhere, those who going through season of sickness. God, you know who they are, you know them name by name. God, we lift up every member here at our New Hope Church family, who dealing with sickness, oh God, all manners of sickness. And God, we just pray that Thou would just touch them right now, wherever they may be. God, I pray that Thou would just continue to, to let them know, God, that you is our healer. Lord, I lift up Sister Pearl Davis, and lift up Brother Sherman, Moses, God, you know, you know, God, how fever their bodies are, sister. I praying, God, for Sister Mary Russell, God, strengthen her, Deacon Alpha Marks, and those who going through sickness, oh God, Stanley Coaston, and Gwen Holloway. God, you know how to touch, you know how to strengthen. God, I just pray that you would just calm the bodies, oh God, those who going through all manners of sickness, God, you able, you can do. Mary Wilson, Lord, I'm just calling these names, because, God, we know that, that you can hear our faintest cry. God, I'm praying now, praying for Mother Helen Johnson, oh God, just touch her. God, I know you didn't bring her this far not to leave her. God, I'm just lifting up our senior members, God, touch them right now. And then those in our community, God, those who going through seasons of bereavement, continue to strengthen, Sister Bette Clayton James, and God, look on those who going through sickness, strengthen, and let them know earth still has no sorrow, that you cannot heal, nor touch Sister Ethel Leslie, and others, oh God, let them know you didn't bring them this far not to leave them. Sister Pauline Thompson, continue to strengthen and heal her from the inside out, and God, do it right now. God, you are able, there's no failure in you, bless us now, bless our church family as a whole, this not only New Hope, but every church opening in your name, every preacher, every pastor. God, I'll just lift up the body of Christ now. God, I ask you, come now in the personal Holy Spirit, touch our spritzly ears, that we can hear, eyes, that we can see, our hearts, that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now you, that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in our sight, oh Lord, our rock and our redeemer. And all the children of God that loves the Lord, said amen. All right, let's get ready into our study on today, as we still dealing with the importance of commitment, the importance of commitment, and we left with the, with the assignment of, of looking at what we are committed to, when it come down to our commitment, we must understand the value of our commitment, even when it comes down to our walk with the Lord. And so, if we going to be committed, is that we must commit ourselves to the Word of God. We must commit ourselves to the Word of God, and because the Word of God not only is, when we study the Bible, when we study the Bible, is that it is the infallible words of God. It was, it was spoken by God, written by different authors, and, but we got to know that we ought to have, we have just, we have not only the spoken word, but we have the written word, and then we have the living word, is that, and we're gonna look at that, because I'm gonna ask you to turn your Bible to St. John, chapter number one, and then we're gonna look at how the, we're gonna look at how that word, how the word became flesh. And so, we got to, we got to, we got to not only understand, but we must see the value of the word. And, 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 and when we look at the living word, we see how Jesus became flesh, and he's the one that taught his disciples, okay? And, and so, when we're dealing with the living word, is that Jesus, the word became flesh, and what we have today, as far as dealing with the word, is that we have the Holy Spirit. And so, his word, and the Holy Spirit is the same as it was Jesus in the flesh during the disciples, during the time of the disciples. And so, so, so keep in mind, is that God's word does not change, it cannot change. And if the word of God is not true, you and I are wasting time. And we got to either believe it to be true or false. And so, and so, I'm driving that, that point, or making it for us to understand, is that we must, the most important thing that can happen in our lives, as believers and as Christians, is to commit ourselves to the word. Not, not our own opinion, but we got to take time out, like we said last week, to study, to read, to remember, to recite the Word of God, not our, not our opinion, but we must, we must do that. And keep this, keep, keep, keep that in mind, is that if, if, if others are going to be saved, if we going to lead others to Christ, is that, is that we got to believe the word, we got to know the word, amen, we got to know the word. And God, let us see that we are not totally committed to the word, if we have not taken time out to read, to learn, to let the word become a reality in our lives, okay? So, so, let's see, let's see what the word, how important it is, and how this living word is so important. So, when you look at John, chapter one, I know you're there, John, chapter one, verse one, it says, "In the beginning was the what?" "Was the word. And the word was with God, and the word was God." Now, now, here what we, here what we have here, is that the word was in the beginning, everything, when you go to the book of Genesis, chapter, chapter one, is that, is that we see everything that happened, that came into existence, came into existence, because of the fact of the word. Huh? Yeah, the word, that the word was with God, the word was God, the word was with God. And, and the more we love the word, the more we love God, the more we love Jesus Christ, the more we love the Holy Spirit, the more we love the church, the more we understand the word, the more we love the people of God, and above all, is that we, we love the work of Jesus Christ. If there is any weakness, not only in our spiritual lives, but also in the life of the church, is that, is that it falls under the umbrella, or that there are those who skipping the Word of God. And as long as we have the Bible, whether it's leather, whether it's electronic, is that as long as we have the word, is that there is no excuse for us not knowing the word. You cannot separate, you cannot separate the Word of God from Jesus. Or some, some say, "I got Jesus, and, and I don't have to read," no, you got to, you got to have both, you got to do both. You cannot know about Jesus, if you have not taken time out to study the word. Because Jesus, Jesus here is telling us, is that, is that the word was, was God, the word was with God, the word has always been with God, okay? And so, we got to commit ourselves to the word. Okay? If you skip on down to verse 14, in that first chapter of St. John, listen at what John, the apostle says, "And the word was made flesh, and dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory, the glory as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth." In other words, the word was made flesh before the flesh came into existence, all y'all, all y'all listening to me. Is that, is that, is that the word was, the word was made flesh, when you go back to the book of Genesis, you hear him say, "Let us." Before the flesh came into existence, the word already exists. The word had power in the beginning. The word had power then, because listen at, when you go to study the book of Genesis, chapter one, is that everything that the Lord spoke, he spoken into existence, it had power. And I just do believe, my brothers and sisters, that if it had power then, if the word had power then, so does it has power now. And that's a possibility, that, that one of the reason why the church is weak, that there's a possibility, from my, from my spiritually perspective, why there's people not being saved, is because of the fact, is that, that there's a possibility that those of, who claims to be disciples, proclaim to be followers of Christ, have not committed themselves to the word of God. So then, it leads to the question, said Pastor, if that's, if that be the case, how do I become committed to the word? And it goes back to what I said last week, is that we got to fill ourselves with the We got to fill ourselves with the word. Just like we commit ourselves to eating, at least three course meals a day, whether, 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 whether we schedule a certain time for breakfast, a certain time for lunch, a certain time for dinner, and in between them, them meals, is that, is that you may have some snacks, but the, but, but the point that I'm, I want us to understand is, is that, is that, is that just like the importance of us eating, physically food, we commit ourselves to eating, we commit ourselves to drinking water, to drinking this, is that so it is, we must do, when it come down to our spiritual life. Is that, is that we, is that we got to, we got to commit ourselves to the word of God. And we have to be careful, that we don't have more of an appetite of the world than we do of the word of God. Let's go back to always say, is that the more word we get in us, less world. And we have to make sure, that when we read the word of God, that we don't just spit it out, we, okay? Because it's so easy to get caught up into the worldly things, we, we can digest so much of the worldly things, that when it come down to the real word of God, is that we have, we have, we have crowded out Jesus in our lives, is that we don't, we don't have room for him. And so, we have to make sure, when I'm talking about having room, we have to make sure, that when it come down to our schedules, that we don't have too much of the worldly thing, too much of our personal agenda, that we don't have time for the word. So, we got to first commit ourselves to the word of God. And, and, and listen to me, brothers and sisters, that, that, that is the starting If you going, if you going, if you going, you just can't eat junk food, and, and, and expect to be healthy, you got to have some vegetables, you got, you got to have the protein, you got to have the right certain amount of food, you just can't eat junk foods, you just can't have a healthy body, just eating sweets, huh? And what, and what has happened, is that we, so many have, have gotten the world, eating the pleasures of the world, is that, is that, is that they become spiritually malnourish. So, we, we got to eat the word, huh? We got to eat the word, got to be committed to the word. Because the word saved us, okay? Now, go down to verse number 18, it says, "No man hath seen God at any time, the only begotten Son, who is in the bosom of the Father, he had declared him." No man hath seen God at any time. Moses thought he wanted to see God, he thought, he thought, he thought he could stand to see the glory of God, and God said, "Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let you see, I'm gonna let you see a little bit of me, I'm gonna just let you see the, the backside of me." And, 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 and God showed him his, showed, showed Moses a little portion of his glory. And, 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 and the little bit that God allowed Moses to see, is that, is that it almost blinded him. Is that when Moses came down off the mountain, is that, and the children of Israel saw him, is that, is that they saw how radiant, and how, and how bright he was, and they, they were scared of, of the glow that Moses had encountered up on the mountain. So, 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 no man has ever seen God and lived to tell it. Moses could not really tell what all he saw, it's because God really could not reveal all of his glory to Moses. But when Jesus came in the flesh, is that we, is that we can, we can have somewhat of an idea. Because what we actually seeing, we seeing a mixture of divine, and dust mixed together. God became flesh in the person of Jesus Christ. You skip on down to verse number 26, John answered them, saying, "I baptized with water, but there is standing one among you, who you know not, the one that is coming after me, gonna baptize you with what fire?" John said, "John, John, 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 John the Baptist said, this, this, this is something different from me, in the one that is coming. I baptize you with water." And so, look at what John says in that 29 verse, "The next day John sees Jesus coming unto him, and said, Behold, look, look at what it said, look here, the Lamb of God, who takes away the sin of the world." What is John talking about? Talking about, "Look at him, behold, look, look at this man coming, the Lamb of God." Goes back to what Jesus said, "I came not to do away with the law, but to fulfill the law." And so, and so, so when you start studying the word of God, is that, is that in the Old Testament, there were requirement for the forgiveness of sin, is that it had to be a lamb. We studied the book of Exodus, couldn't be just any kind of lamb for sacrifice, when it come down to forgiveness, it had to be a lamb, and the lamb. A lamb without spotless, a spotless lamb. Lamb with no blemish. So, when we become committed to the word of God, is that we must believe that Jesus has the power to do what, Pastor? To take away the sins of the world. You and I cannot be effective witnesses, if we don't believe that. That Jesus takes away the sins of the world. Say that, say that, that Jesus takes away my sins. And, 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 and that, that, that ought to be a daily exercise, that we ought to commit ourselves, just like we eating breakfast, just like we commit ourselves to dinner, to lunch, to snacks, to whatever we commit ourselves, is that, is that, is that we got to tell ourselves, we got to eat that every day, make, make, make that a practice, is that Jesus came to take away my sins. And you'll be surprised, of, of the Christians who walks around, who afraid to say that. And there's, that, that, you know, ain't nobody here but us, and, 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 think about that, is that, is that Satan has put this guilt on many believers, in their heart, in their mind, is that, is that, where else, "I told a lie, I did this, and I did that, and, 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 and I'm the worst of the sinners." No, no, you, you can't, you can't let that trick of the devil cause you to become effective in your weakness, become ineffective in your service for Christ. Look at what John said, in, in John 1:29. Takes away the sin of the world. Just because I slips, just because I mess up, just because I missed the mark, just because I sin, it does not mean that, that, that I, that I'm out of reach of the merciful hand of, of Christ Jesus. And when I become committed to the word, when I get the word in me, is that, is that it just simply reminds me, that if I do sin, that Jesus will forgive me. When I become committed to the word, is that the word of God reminds me, that if I, that if I go out and I slip, that if I fall, that if I get entangled in sin, is that I got an advocate, I got somebody that can help me, that I got somebody that can wash away I want you to think about this, I want, I want you to think about this. I'm kind of from the old school, when it come down to, to bath, I, you know, I, I still believe in the tub, I believe in sitting in the water, and, and I take showers periodically, but, but not like I do, when it come down to bath. And, and I know they got this, these bottles of, of different containers that come with liquid, but, but I, 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 I still, I still, I still believe in a bar of soap, okay? I still believe, I may have that, that bottle, that, 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 that Irish Spring, or whatever, that I could, you want to go to the hotel, they don't even have that, now you got this, got the squeeze, the, the, the soap, and the shampoo, and the lotion now, but, 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 but I believe, I believe in having a bar of soap. The question that I want to ask, that if you use that bar of soap, does that bar of soap remain the same size? Think about it, before you answer that, that if you use a bar of soap, and you know what a bar of soap is, that if you use that bar of soap, does that bar of soap stay the same size every time you use it? Of course not. What are you saying, Pastor? That if you get dirty today, it does not mean that you did not take a bath on yesterday? Lord, that's good teaching right there, huh? That if I get dirty on today, that if I mess up, it does not mean that I did not take a bath on yesterday, or early this morning. And what I'm trying to remind us as Christians, is that we ought not be afraid, that if someone may see our dirtiness, see our dirty sins. So, the word of God, when we become committed to the word of God, is that we ought not to be ashamed, when we know what the work of Jesus Christ have done for us. So, let's, let's not be like that young rich ruder, that, that, that bragging on how he'd have kept all the commandments, how, how he been good, all of his life. Let's not have that attitude. Let's not have that attitude. Yes, I'm a sinner, but what separate me from other sinners that I'm a sinner saved by grace? I'm too am, uh, uh, a candidate for messing up. I, 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 I'm too am a candidate for sinning. And that's why it's so important for us to, to bathe ourselves in the word of God. When we get, when we get full of the word, and that's why it's so important for us to understand the work of the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost. He don't, he don't, he don't, he don't dwell, yes, in an unclean place, but as long as we got the word in us, the Holy Spirit along with the word washes us. Okay? Holy Spirit brings to our attention our mess up. Uh, uh, that, 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 that God given, uh, uh, innate that is in us, that nature of God, uh, when God breathed, His breath in us, He put a part of Himself in us called conscious. And that's one of the things that we as believers have not, uh, 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 settled in our spirit, the word omit. I messed up, I've done wrong. I'm still subject of doing wrong. I be tempted at times. And when, and when we ignore this, is that we are giving in to the tricks of Satan. We, uh, we, we making room for the enemy, the true enemy, who's the devil. We get closer to him and far away from Jesus the Christ. That's good teaching now. So you may wanna write this down, is that the only way you and I can stay close to Jesus Christ is by what pastor? Is by reading the word of God. Let me say that again. Is that the only way that you and I can stay close to Jesus the Christ is by reading the word of God. Satan has no new tricks. And the less word we, uh, read, the more we open up the opportunity for Satan to do what he does best. All right, a couple more verses, thirty-seven through thirty-nine. In that first chapter of John, it said, "And two of the disciples heard him speak, and they followed Jesus. Then Jesus turned and saw them following him, and said to him, 'What seek ye?' They said to him, 'Rabbi,' which is to say being an intrepid master, 'where dwelt thou?' And look at verse thirty-nine. And he said unto them, 'Come and see.' They came and saw where he dwelt, and abhorred with him that day, for it was about the tenth hour." Let's stop there, I just wanna ask a few question. When was the last time you spent a day with Jesus? When was the last time you spent at least a day with Jesus? Those of us who's working, if we can put eight hours on our job and sometime overtime, we need to ask ourselves, when was the last time we gave Jesus at least eight hours? We don't wanna cheat Jesus out of what is due unto Him. If we ever committed ourselves to, uh, to whatever work, commit ourselves to how many hours? Is that, is that, is that, if these, if these disciples that first was introduced to Jesus, uh, spent a day with Him, what about you and I? And only time that we can really spend time with Jesus, it goes back to what we said, is through reading the word and prayer. That's only two ways that we can spend time with, uh, with Jesus, with the Lord. The Lord talks to us through His word. We talk to the Lord through prayer. Okay? Get that. He talks to us through His word, and we talk to Him through prayer. And you have to be careful with that prayer, because you got to make sure it's not a one-way conversation. And many are guilty of a one-way conversation because they don't talk God's language. They don't talk, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't really talk to the Lord when you don't really know the word. You got to make sure that you gets enough word in you that when you talking to the Lord, at least tell the Lord what he said. Okay? If we spend hours talking to our loved ones, to our family and our friends, and leave the Lord out of the equations, is there something that's wrong? Jesus has always been acquisitive, He always had an acquisitive mind, even at a young age of twelve years old, being a Jewish boy. We kind of overlook at what happened when he got left behind by, uh, his mother Mirah and his father Joseph, when they assumed that he was, uh, with them, is that, uh, it wa- it was, it was, um, it was by law, it was by law that, that a Jewish boy, a Jewish male would, 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 would go to Jerusalem, to the temple, at least three times a, in a year. But what, but the point that I wanna, wanna, wanna bring to our attention is that, is that, is that, is that, is that when Jesus was in the midst of those great theologians, those great Pharisees, those great, uh, lawyers, those great teachers, those great strives who knew the Bible, it wa- it wasn't so much as far as Him asking them questions, but it was so much what was so astounding about it, is how He was answering. What amazed them at a young age, at twelve years old, how much knowledge that He had when it came down to the script. Even though, yes, He, He may, He may have asked them some question, but He already knew the answer. Yes, Jesus, even though He was not fifty percent God and fifty percent man, I believe He's a hundred percent God, a hundred percent man, all at the same time, but because He was a student, because He studied, because He read the Bible, because, because He studied, uh, 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 the, 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 He knew the, um, the pentacles, He knew, He knew the, um, uh, the letter of the law. He knew all of that. Cause it goes back to what? He had to grow, He had to grow into wisdom, into knowledge. But the stunning thing, the amazement thing, is the answers. These disciples, these early disciples, Andrew them, is that they was, they, they left, uh, John because they was listening to the words of Jesus. They was dumbfounded. And my brothers and sisters, if that word had an impact, if that, if the word of God has not changed, if it, if it had that much of power back then, I'm certainly sure it would have it today. These disciples got close to Jesus because of the fact of His words. Think about it. The words of Jesus, how He taught, He taught so that, uh, 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 the highly educated, uh, couldn't understand Him. He, 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 He taught so that even babes, I think, uh, the great, uh, uh, Frank Ray says is that, uh, the word of God is so deep that a baby can get in it and, and, and won't even drown in it. That's just how deep it is. Okay? So, so if we, if we want to be effective, uh, believers in doing what the Lord have ca- called us do, is that we got to spend some time with Jesus and, uh, we got to spend some time in His word. And, uh, that's how we going to, um, that's how we gonna be, uh, about our Father's business, okay? So, so, so ask yourself, how much time am I spending? I'm spending time with loved ones, I'm spending time with work, I'm spending time with friends, I, I, I'm spending time, uh, uh, e- even when it come down to church minutes, say, "Well pastor, I, 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 I spent time uh, coming to church, I spent time, uh, 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 doing this and that, uh, at the church. Do that, do that, do that count?" No, that don't count, that don't count, that don't count. Only thing that counts is us getting into the word, reading, studying the word of God. All of that other stuff we do is just part of the assignment, but, 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 but when we spend time in the word, is that we're spending time with Jesus, okay? So, so make sure that we don't, uh, shortchange, uh, the Lord when it come down to our commitment. So I wanna challenge us, I wanna leave us there. Look, look at, look at your agenda, look at your itinerary. Look at, look at how you spend, uh, uh, your day when it come down to breakfast, when it come down to lunch, when it come down to dinner, when it come down to talking, uh, uh, to friends and family. How much that time we spend on Facebook, we spend texting? Is that, is that where, where, where is the Lord at? Where, where, where is Jesus at? Where, where He's at there in that spin of, uh, span of a day, okay? I- i- if you got, you got, you got more time with others, if you have not been able to equal it out, is, is that you got work to do. Okay? So we cannot become committed uh, to the cause of Christ until we become committed to His word. Thank you, God bless you, tune in with us on next week, and, uh, I promise you it will do you good for the days to come. God, we love you, God, we magnify you. God, we ask that you for forgiveness of all of our shortcomings. God, continue to give us a hallway and give us a thirst for righteousness. Bless us now, bless each hearer. God stir up the gifts in us that we not only be hearers only, but be doers of Your word. We ask it all in Your sweet son Jesus' name, we ask it all, amen.